Okay, so, welcome, everybody. This is the one time of year when I get to call the meeting to order, so I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:01. And we're gonna start with reorganization, but before we start with reorganization, I'd like to do or recognize two people. I would have been recognizing third, three, but somebody re-upped. For many years, we had two really wonderful school committee representatives, Molly Thomas from West Stockbridge and Sean Stephen from Stockbridge, and I'd like to publicly thank them for their service on the committee. It's it's hard working on a school committee, and I mean, not so hard to be intimidating, but and you occasionally get cornered on the soccer field or in the gym or at the supermarket, so I'd like to thank Molly and Sean. Next time, if Molly and Sean, you're watching, I see you. I have very nice fleece quarter zip Nike dry fit pullovers in the appropriate sizes or sizes that can be traded in for more appropriate sizes, if I guess wrong, so thanks to Molly and Sean. And then thanks to Bill for re-upping. For re-upping, you do not get a shirt. But you will at some point.
You save the district some money. Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is now move towards the reorganization of the school committee. We do this with each election. And I'd like to see if there are any nominations for chair. And then after we settle the chair thing, then I'll hand the rest of the meeting over to the chair to go forward. So are there any nominations?
I nominate Steve Bannon for chairman of the school committee.
Okay, is there a second?
I second. Second for chair thing.
Right. Are are there any other nominations for chair? Hearing crickets. I would like to call for, this is a roll call.
You don't have to do roll call because everyone's in attendance.
Okay, so this will not be a roll call vote.
No, school committee members.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? That is unanimous. Steve, you have a tremendous mandate to go forward.
Thank you very much.
Corey is not here.
No. I thought you just said no one was on Zoom.
She's not on Zoom.
If if a school committee member is on Zoom, then we have to do.
It just makes it a little quicker and easier.
Yeah.
Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Rich Mahoney.
Second. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. Assistant treasurer.
Nominate Corey.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Unanimous. Nomination for secretary?
Diane Singer.
Second.
Yep. Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Unanimous.
And Diane is here tonight.
Yes.
How you got up the first time?
So since I've only done this for some odd years, I think Treasury and Recorder has not announced, done in the June.
Correct.
So next, we go with the subcommittees. And because there's one new member, we'll at least go give a little bit of an overview of what the subcommittee does. And let me just preface this by saying the district consolidation and sharing subcommittee is being eliminated. The school center and the Fund for Excellence is now in complete control of Berkshire County Foundation, so those will come off also. Our members will stay on. But there's no need for us to appoint someone. That's if someone gets off, that will be done by Berkshire County. So let's start with negotiating subcommittee. And let me say, all the subcommittees, we usually have a maximum of four. We can go to five. We don't want to form them. And what I do is I give you a chance to stay on if you'd like to. And then we see how many openings there are. If someone is not here, like Corey, couldn't make it tonight, she will stay on all of her positions. And I've already spoken to her. So negotiating subcommittee is as the title says, handles all the negotiations of contracts with the unit labor unions. And this year, we're going to have two contracts. So it's myself, Anne, and Jason. Would the two of you like to stay on?
Yes.
Yes. Good. Would anybody else like to join us?
Can I nominate Sarah? Since I understand you're former teacher? Yeah, you might be a good asset.
Sarah, would you like to be on?
Sure, I'll do it.
Anyone else? Actually, I think four is a good number for that. The warrant subcommittee is simply because of the law requires us to meet and sign warrants. So it's it has been the finance. We're supposed to do it right before the finance subcommittee, which is it's myself, Rich, Bill, and Bonnie. So let's just leave it at that. Buildings and grounds. Jason, you want to give a little overview?
Yeah, I mean, well, it's very busy because now everyone on Buildings and Grounds is also on the new monument committee, so you're basically getting two for one on that deal. But I mean, it's a great committee that, you know, basically is responsible for all the buildings and grounds and everything in between as far as the infrastructure.
So right now, it's Anne, Bonnie, no, I'm sorry, Jason, Bill, and Diane. We have at least one opening and have more. Does anybody else like to get on? Do you want to do that?
I am interested in that.
That's perfect.
Great.
And Stevie's skip policy made by accident.
Oh, yeah, I did, sorry.
How often does the Buildings and Grounds meet?
Well, as now that we're part of the new monument, that'll be probably every other week, I think, or is it maybe three weeks, maybe it's?
No, no, much less.
Part of the building committee.
So that's once a month. And then Buildings and Grounds, usually maybe once every two months, I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, once a month, but there there's some, I'll put a whole packet together for you, Sarah. We have a schedule of the the building committee, and it's tied to preparing particular documents. So in this first phase, much all our work will be done by April, but the next set of documents are due January 31st. Anyone else like to be on Buildings and Grounds? Policy, I skipped over that. Policy. We review all policies of the district. It's taken a backseat a little bit this year because we've been pretty busy. But it actually is an important subcommittee, and it's myself, Corey, and Jason. Would anybody else like to join that? And would you like to stay on, Jason?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll go with.
There's also, Steve, when we appoint the representative, when you Stockbridge, there'll be another person.
Yes, yes. Well, you should be leaving some spots open.
Sure. Right, yeah. And what we'll do is we'll have, Doreen will come up with a finished copy, and we'll go do this again at that meeting, just to let that person. Superintendent's evaluation and advisory. Right now, it's Anne, Bonnie, and Corey. Bonnie's not here, so we're leaving her on also. If she has a difference of opinion, we can always go through that when we have the Stockbridge representative. Anne, and Anne, do you want to stand?
Ah, yes.
We wanted to stand. Would anybody like to join then? And Anne, do you want to just talk about what you do?
So superintendent is the one person in the whole school district who has a public evaluation. In other words, it's open to the public, so we meet and go over the goals for the school year and kind of rate Peter against those and against a bunch of guidelines that are set by the state. And it takes three or four meetings over the course of the year to pull it all together and then present it, write it, and present.
Anyone like to join?
The only other thing, so sort of half of it is that. And then the other half of it, which is evolving more over time, is it's like a kitchen cabinet for me, and I can sort of use the advisory part of the group as a sounding board to wrestle with some problems and get feedback.
So we're gonna try to meet about once a month, but we'll see. We're not meeting in December.
Okay, so we will leave it with, right now, with three of you on that, and we'll see if we get anyone else. Technology subcommittee has not met recently. Steve, do you want to give an overview? We haven't done a lot, to be honest.
Yeah, but I mean, it's interesting. The whole COVID thing really accelerated our work on technology, and we're in a pretty strong refresh cycle in terms of technology. We've got a very solid plan. The the committee needs to reflect on where our technology in the district, both sort of hardware and software and some other pieces. We've not met a lot lately. And I think in general terms, things are pretty good shape. I think it would be good to start redoing some more to look at some of the implications of instructional technology now that our basic needs are are being met.
Let me just, can we do a subcommittee?
Yeah.
I think this was a dormitory committee for a long time when I first came on. And I remember Bradway kind of restarted it.
He's the one who started.
Was it started or restarted? I think it started. And because we were at a real crisis point on a lot of fronts, there was a lot of concern. And I feel like we're not meeting now because we're not at all in that position.
Do you want to?
Do we need to continue it or discontinue it and maybe?
Do some ad hoc meetings or something?
Well, I mean, I think some of, I think some of its responsibilities are subsumed by Buildings and Grounds, some are subsumed by Finance. I just don't know if it needs to be. I'm not, I mean, I'm throwing it out there because the fact that we haven't really met much tells me it may not be needed. You know, and I remember the discussions of when it was created, when it clearly was needed.
We have saw the strong internal technology, you know, we usually this group that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I feel like if there's a, if a big technology issue comes up, there's a big purchase or something like that, Peter and Chad can just present it to the committee as a whole, but it's not something that needs to be monitored by a subcommittee all the time anymore.
This could be groundbreaking to eliminate.
We're eliminating a couple, and I mean, we're always making more things. It could be sort of neat to take some things off our plates.
Yeah, and other people put their energy into instead of just meeting for the sake of meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna, unless someone objects, we're going to eliminate the technology subcommittee. Rich, next one's your finance subcommittee.
You want me to describe it?
Yes, please.
So we, our primary function is the, working with the administration to compose the budget. And we do some very minimal other, like, monitoring in the spring, and sometimes we do some and we don't, but we generally fire up in the summer and try to have a deliberative budget process that starts you know, in June going through, and we have a good schedule where we break down the budget, each individual building as well as the administrative departments. And then try to both front run and then during the budget process, do kind of the nuts and bolts analysis. Make sure it's a budget process, and I think even in years that we've had tight budgets, the process was much smoother with the finance committee. So.
So right now, it's Rich, myself, Phil, and Bonnie. Anyone else like to join it?
I mean, I personally feel like that's a committee that is best when you have someone each town on it.
I agree.
Sean stepping off, I think maybe we we that for whoever the lucky Stockbridge person is to slot in.
We've always had somebody, at least one person from each town.
I don't think it was designed that way, but it worked out that way. It worked out well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it, weigh this right now until the Stockbridge person is on. Communications subcommittee, Rich is more than you can describe.
I think that's, I mean, I think that was an ad hoc committee to kind of deal with issues we had born on a class budget. I don't know whether we actually really dealt with them or not, but that was designed by, Bill made the motion for that, and I wish it said done by September.
Yeah, right. So what, do you want to eliminate that one as well?
Yeah, I think it is still eliminated. I think, I think by its own terms, it was eliminated.
Birth template.
Yes, it's a sunset clause.
Yes. Yes.
Yep. Next one would be the vocational advisory board, which meets between two and three times a year. As its title says, it's to discuss vocational programs strictly in the high school. So it's myself, Jason, Corey, and Diane. Would anyone else like to join it? And then the last is the MASC representative. It's Bill and Jason. Would you two like to stay there?
If someone else wants to join, I don't mind leading that.
Anne, you want to the conference?
Yeah, that's right. What, what do you do?
Well, that's the problem. I think what we want to do, I would love to see us get more involved with the MASC, and maybe one of our goals to in early summer to talk about recruits and members to go to the conference as a group. We years passed, and I'm talking in the past, but you have to forgive me. Nine out of 10 or 10 out of 10 members would go to the conference and the superintendent, and for a variety of reasons.
It's an IANS.
Yeah, it used to be, it used to be it used to be in Worcester, and it was much easier to go to, and it was much better, but so that may be one of the things that we look at is being well represented at the conference.
I mean, I'd love to do a little report on the conference.
Yeah, we could, we will put that on the next agenda. Because we used to do that also.
I think it'd be a good idea.
So I'm gonna put you on there.
Yeah.
Is, is Jason coming off or?
I'll come on. I'll stay on.
Okay, okay, perfect. There's also the other part of that, because there's a local chapter, which is Division Six. Division Six, so there's some stuff that happens locally or regionally. So we've eliminated a number of committees. I'm gonna form one. It's temporary, but it's the COVID criteria guidelines need to be reviewed. So this is a perfect time to get people onto that. It'll include Sharon, it'll include Carl, Christie, and myself and Corey, because Corey's asked to be on it. So who else would like to be on the committee to review the COVID criteria guidelines? I think we can have four. I'd love to have someone who's active, kids were active in the school, really know what's going on. Myself, Steve. Anyone else? I think it's gonna be a short term, probably a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
But I think it's important. We've, it's late dormant, and they need to be updated. Anyone have anything else before we move on to the agenda? Great. Okay, so we have in our packet the minutes of October 6th, October 20th, and the very quick special meeting on October 31st.
Motion approved in this October 6th, October 20th, and special meeting on October 31st all of the year 2022.
Second. So a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? So show it as unanimous. Either turn it over to you for the superintendent.
Okay, so let's that principals want to share some good news, or is this a long enough agenda that we skip it and just go straight to the technical stuff? Let's do that. And we don't have student members tonight, which is unusual. Why? So I did the recognition of Sean and Molly, so that's good. In your packet, I have a proposed letter to a number of state representatives on the operational services division. Inflation increase, so the the tuition rates for special education private schools could go up as much as 14%. And that would cost our district something in the order of $160,000 and cause all sorts of other issues. So I'm proposing that I send this letter on behalf of the school committee to Representative Pignatelli, Senator Mark, State Senator Mark, and Senator Ed Markey, and any other elected officials you want me to send it to.
Do you have any discussion? Do you have a motion?
So why are we sending, well, yeah, I mean, should be.
I don't know the Markey. I think Doreen put on Markey. I don't think he's got any
Yeah.
role in it.
Motion to authorize Lieutenant Dillon to send a letter.
Have a second.
Second, but I'd like to add, why isn't the governor on?
There you go.
That's what I think, yes.
Why don't I do Governor Baker and Governor-elect Hillary?
Our other school districts do the same.
Yeah, this, this is like a concerted effort to make some noise about this.
Good.
So the next, we need to, oh, sorry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Unanimous. Can I just mention, I just see the attendees that one of the student members, the new one, Ariel Dominguez, does look like he's on. Oh, good. Ariel, thanks for being here. Let me promote. Thank you, Jason.
You won't. I don't want to promise, but it doesn't have to speak or anything. Sorry, Ariel.
Sorry, I missed you. So the, the next thing is a request to approve a grant from the Tides Center. We have an opportunity, Tides is funding work through the Next Generation Learning Challenges. And, and we're doing a study of sort of educational vision, and Christie's involved in it, I'm involved in it, Keith is involved in it, a few teachers are, so there are six folks from the Berkshire Hills side, and we're also doing this with Southern Berkshire, and there's six people from that side. And the I'm requesting your approval of this grant to do this work. We meet maybe once a month. And ultimately, in this, there'll be a centerpiece for that. Some subset of us may travel to visit a school in California that some of us visited three years ago before COVID, Christine.
Yes.
Yeah. So I have a motion to accept. So it's $6,000 from the Tides Foundation.
Motion to accept the grant from the Tides Foundation. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. The next one is a request from the middle school from Diane Vigiano, an ESL teacher, to accept a $650 check or grant from the college club. And that's to support the purchase of the Go Decode Phonics program. Do I have a motion?
So.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? It's unanimous. The next one is, and we're getting in early, so we're making good progress. Before the basketball season has started, we're so Boys Boost Basketball Booster Club is requesting to support an additional assistant coach for the season, and the Booster Club will fund that position. Do I have a motion? Oh, go ahead.
Well, you want to do the motion first?
No.
Well, I know with the soccer, that it wasn't true that the Booster Club had the funds to do it. The Booster Club didn't even know about it. Both Booster Clubs at the time were soccer.
So Carl had the name of the Booster Club. I have the minute notes. He's got all of this with him. The difference between the assistant coach position with basketball compared to soccer. Soccer historically was funded by the district, and I talked about this when I came back to regards to the soccer positions. Their proposed change had happened right as we were going through the budget season 2019, 2020, and then that was never implemented. The basketball boosters have been funding their additional assistant coach. And this practice goes quite a ways back, and it has to do with the number of students participating. And that the, the coaching that is provided by the district provides an adequate ratio, but the boosters can choose to have an additional coach if they would like. The boys want to move forward with that this year. The girls do not. They're not requesting that the Booster Club pays for additional coverage. So that is why this proposal has come to you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I would just add, I think this private paying coaches needs to be revisited in the COVID criteria guidelines, but what you propose a process to do that.
Just to give you a little background, how this came about was the athletic director at the time did a pretty extensive look at how many coaches should be safely, should be on for each team, and then if the coach or the Booster Club felt there should be more and the Booster Club had the money, then they would come to the school committee for their request. So, yeah, we're gonna look at this again with the COVID criteria. And whatever we look at as a subcommittee, be clear, it's our guideline, so they have to be approved by the school committee. So if we come up, you know, Rich and I come up with the dopey idea, you guys could say that's just dumb.
You'll be the first.
Yeah, exactly. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to the, to the Booster Club to pay for assistant coach.
Have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? So there's unanimous.
Okay, the, the next one, and I'm not entirely sure of this, because we're coming to you to be safe about it. There's interest in the high school in starting a bowling club, not a bowling team. And, and what I'm asking your approval for is to let the bowling club charge user fees like other activities, which would make it self-sustaining. Right, so five or six students want to have a bowling club. They don't want to bowl every day. They want to bowl once a week. And the current user fee structure that we have for athletics, but also other activities, would, would support that. So I don't actually know that you need to vote on it, but, but I thought it's better to bring it to you to be safe than not bring it to you and and create some drama.
So are you saying that we're gonna collect from each person the user fee, but it's gonna go back to them? So that they can bowl as a
The, the user fee is gonna fund the the lane time.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion?
Is this, this is like what we did for Ultimate Frisbee?
Yes.
Okay, same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Unanimous. The bowling club will be happy.
So you said this isn't, I know there's like, it's not MIAA, but there's a, there's a very healthy Berkshire County bowling league.
This may be a stepping stone to reactivating and go. Team, but, but I think they've only five or six people, so if they really enjoy this, then we'll go. There you go.
So the, the next one, and I'm actually, I think I may change the order of this, if it's okay. I'd like, I've got Keith here, and I'd love for him to do a CBT update, and then I'll come back and switch that.
I'd like, I've got Keith here and I'd love for him to do a CBT update and then I'll come back and switch that with the enrollment report. Because I, I, one, it's polite to Keith and we'll get him out of here and two, the, the enrollment discussion would be very long. So let me. Share my screen and, and Keith will talk through some slides. For, for those of you that may not know, Keith is our Assistant Principal for Career Vocational and Technical Education. What in other terms as you call vocational education. Give me just a sec.
You can sit over there.
You could sit here, just enunciate.
I'm glad Ariel is here because I was worried that when the students heard that I was going to be speaking tonight, they all failed. So we can get started. There's a lovely table right in the front of the school as you walk in. That was a collaboration between the wood shop and the auto shop. And I, I just thought that was a nice symbol because the department, for all of their disparities, and we can, we'll see, we'll see the range of programming that we offer. Actually have a lot in common as well. So. My, my mission is basically to enhance and expand our vocational programming. And specifically, we want to increase the Chapter 74 programming. Because the requirements and the financial incentives are so much higher for Chapter 74. I, I was given the green light by a state official the other week to hashtag, it's the Cadillac of CBT programming. So, but we do get benefit from our Perkins and our, and our pathways programs. Perkins is also a vocational non-Chapter 74. And pathways are programs that allow us to do really cool innovative stuff like around like medical pathways for any engineering, for example. On the next slide, we recently put in some preliminary paperwork for MSBA. In, in the context of the new high school. And we currently have automotive technology and horticulture as our Chapter 74 programs. The proposed programs are our best thinking about where we're heading based on student interests. And also the workforce development needs in South County. And so you can see we have all, all the programs that are up there. Really, we already have a substantial footprint. In, but changing them to Chapter 74 will, will increase that experience. So briefly, I just wanted to go through quickly the different programs and this is, this is off script. But just in the last hour, I received an email from Christie forwarded from a parent whose car broke down this morning at the high school. And she was so grateful for the students who, who, well, as she put it, she, she often goes to see the performances at the high school. But these kids performed something really special customer service. And so it was delightful to see that. Kristin L. and I are working right now to get his shop certified by Automotive Service Excellence, which is a really high bar. And, and also to get his curriculum certified in that way. He's excited to work with the program advisory committee that he has to purchase a new alignment machine and a new tire changing machine. And you can see that we have some really nice community partners in all of these slides. Horticulture and next slide, they're gearing up for their big holiday plant sale. We're also hosting Arborist Day, which a whole bunch of arborists are going to come and, and do a bunch of tree work on campus for free. Well, they're getting lunch. So, and the students get to see, you know, that those arborists in action. Early childhood is, is the, is the tough room to go into because I'm just supposed to observe and I, I wanted to start playing with the children. That's just today. This we think is our low hanging fruit for our next Chapter 74 program. We'll see. But it jinxed it, but we did submit a preliminary application for Chapter 74 approval today. With the goal of by the end of the year, getting approved. It'll, it'll depend a little bit about what the building inspection. Results are, but if the building inspector thinks that's, we're, we're good, then we'll work on aligning our curriculum. We're trying to get it to be a licensed daycare through EEC. Because that's really something we need for Chapter 74 approval. So there's a lot of work going on there. In terms of wood technology, I'm sure that I missed Julian Vidal, so I brought up the bowl that he made. And it's absolutely beautiful. They're doing a lot of good work in, in wood technology. But also I'm really excited that they are reconnecting with greenagers and their trades pathways. And that's, that's going to yield some important off-campus work experiences for students interested in the trades. And recently they went to the Berkshire Community College construction site and they're monitoring that building as it changes over time. There's also good collaboration with a middle school teacher, Danny O'Dowd. You can see there the, the wood CNC machine. That's now in the maker space and they're collaborating on, on using that, just computer assisted. Technology in computer science. Tom asked me to put this on here. It's a, it's a game that students make. It's Whack-a-Mole where a teacher pops up in a hole and they whack them. It, it says, no teachers were harmed in the making of this video game. Tom, Tom's work with Project Lead the Way has an emphasis on competency-based and project-based teaching and learning. Which is really the, the focus of the school right now. And so I'm excited that he's able to shed, shed that light on, on the school's work. We also recently got an offer of a donation for some Dell workstations and servers, such as say from General Dynamics. Retailing at around $40,000. And so, I mean, I'm sure it's used, so. It's probably not worth quite that much, but it's, it's good stuff. So we're probably getting a request to accept that at some point. Moving on to engineering and advanced manufacturing with Aaron Fisher. You can see our, our new CNC machine there on the bottom. That, that's a, a very expensive and fine machine to do some metal mill work. And we're partnering with the Berkshire Innovation Center to just get smarter about the technical aspects of that machine. And, and Aaron also, his curriculum is grounded in Project Lead the Way. And again, just they have really good community partners. One of our students is doing ultrasonic sewing right now at Boyd Technologies. I'm not going to get into that. On the horizon. I, I feel like I'll be working on a number of things. One, just helping the school on its path towards competencies. I know the CBT Department has decided that the engineering design process, safety and teamwork are important competencies. That transcend all these courses because we were sitting in a room wondering, how does the guy who works on cars and the guy who works with little children have something in common? And in fact, the engineering design process where you're solving problems in a team safely is actually the way to go. So we're also going to be looking at the schedule this year because our CBT classes right now are challenged. To, in, in terms of like, they need, they need a solid block of time. You don't want a student to, you know, take the tires and, and the brakes off a car and, and then have the bell ring. So we're, we're working on that. I'm super excited about the college and career planning team, which is a collaboration with the middle school to help. This is, this is how I'm billing it. I want all students at the high school to know why they're there, what they're doing there, why it matters. And how it relates to where they're going after they graduate. And so the college and career planning team this year is going to really lay a foundation for that. And collaborations, we are really blessed with the number of different collaborators we have. Some of which are on the final slide. And but before I talk about them, I just want to say that in, in my new perch as an administrator at the high school. I'm just super impressed with the teachers that I work with. They're just all in. And they really are working hard on the transition of competencies. And I, I feel remiss. I didn't use this space to celebrate them. I wanted to shout out our healthcare pathway. Elsa Hernandez and Beth Cook have partnered with Fairview Hospital and are taking student groups every week to the hospital. So kids can get real exposure to the medical field. Again, our community partners, I highlighted those in previous slides, really provide our students with a lot of hands-on activities. That promote their education skills and soft skills too. We have advisory board members that for our Chapter 74 programs that make our programs stronger. Because they bring their industry perspective into our, our learning. The Berkshire Innovation Center I mentioned as a, as a invaluable partner. Burke's, Burke 12s, Jake Everwine and Frank Cody have given us so much advice on the CBT programming needs in South County. And you, I, one thing I didn't mention on this slide, but the Berkshire Workforce Board and Heather Chauvin Williams. Like I feel like I'm in touch with her every other day with some requests for this or that. And she's always there for us. And, and finally, I don't think I could have had such a good watch in this position without Sean Flynn, who really carried the bulk of this work. Over the last few years. So that's, that's what I had.
Sure. Questions, comments?
Keith, this came up with the building committee. Where is the culinary aspect? In all of this? It came up with the building committee last week that that should be looked at because we have a, a, a. Dynamic and growing culinary area.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's. Something that we're going to work into. Yeah, I don't think it's, we.
I would think it's going to be in the new school because under the current constraints, we can't have. Because we don't have, what, we don't have, I don't know what, we don't have the ability and we don't have the licensing or whatever it needs in the kitchen.
The, the, the programs Keith's proposing now are, are very closely tied to the regional employment board and the needs of the community. Intuitively, we all think culinary is also one of those needs, but, but the ones he's proposing are in priority order. So where we may end up with culinary is not a, and this is can evolve initially, but it may not be a formal Chapter 74 program in culinary. But it may be pathways and robust internships in mobile, in mobile restaurants. Anyone else? Thank you very much. All very exciting. Thank you. That was excellent. That's really good work. Think about to where we were eight years ago and where we are now. Okay. It's so, so good. He's going to have to keep coming back. So let me go back to the other thing, which is our October 1 enrollment and assessment report. And, and for those of you who have the paper copy of it, there are really two sheets. And, and I want to explain sort of the second sheet first and then the first sheet second. If you go to the bottom of the sheet with all. The one that says choice students, intuition in students, then.
History of 523?
The October 1. So in the bottom of the second sheet of the October 1. In the bottom right corner, there's a total numbered students, which is 1,205. And I wanted to flag that. So then we go back to the, the first page. If, if you go to the first page, you see how the students, how the enrollments broken down by town, by building. And by grade level, right? So if you, if you follow me down, the far right, Great Barrington total has 645 students. Stockbridge 114 and West Stockbridge 107 for a total of 866 students. That's the total number of district students in the district. And if you take the, the 1205, the 866 from the 1205, that's the, the other students. The 866 is important because that's how the assessment for the member tans is, is developed. So our total number of students this year of resident students in our three tans went up by six. But if you look at the, the sheet, and this is what Steve was talking about in the finance subcommittee. Great Barrington's percentage of the total went up. Almost a whole percent. You following me on this? And, and Stockbridge's went down like half a percent. And West Stockbridge's went down like point, point four percent. In fact, the assessment percentage number is what drives our, our operating budget. So later, as we get into big budget conversations. The, the amount that's paid by the three tans will be divided up 74.4804 to Great Barrington. 13.164 to Stockbridge and 12.355, that was the best.
Above the minimum.
Right, yeah. So this gives you context. You can. Play around with this and, and analyze it some. Last year's senior class was a very large class and that actually was a mistake I made in my first year. Because I counted two classes because I didn't understand it. But now I understand it. And, and this year's senior class is a, is a little bit smaller. So 115. As you go to the second page, the, the sophomore class, the 10th graders is pretty large, 136. This year's eighth grade is a little small at 89. That's probably from Farmington River kids, being fewer Farmington River kids and then going to Lee. And, and. But, but as those eighth graders become ninth graders next year, we expect to, to pick up some Richmond kids. And kids from neighboring communities. And then if you want to go like 10 by 10, you could take a town like. Alford or Dalton and see how many choice students there are from, from those.
Is that a high number for Pittsville? That seems high.
It is relatively high, yeah. Yeah. So we can talk about this more, but, but this is like a foundational piece because the assessments drive our budgets. And then the, the numbers drive. Programming and staffing and all sorts of other things. Any questions or any notices? This also might be a good one to like, look at at home, either on your laptop or with a ruler and see if you spot, spot trends or other things.
Does, does the district receive the same amount of money for kids that are choosing in?
Yes, the, there are like four ways kids can move around in Massachusetts and, and one of them is school choice. So if we accept a school choice student, on the surface we get $5,000. And then if they have additional special needs, we might get more money. Then the next way is, is tuition and we have tuition agreements with Richmond for ninth to 12th grade because they don't have a high school. And with Farmington River, which is Otis and Sandersville through seventh to 12th grade because they stop in sixth grade. seventh to twelfth grade because they've stopped in sixth grade. And those are slightly different at different grade levels, but it's in the ten to eleven thousand dollar range. Part of what Keith was talking about was the chapter seventy-four programs. And if somebody lives in another community and choices into us through chapter seventy-four, then we can charge tuition in the twenty thousand dollar range. And then there are two other ones. If kids go to a charter school and there's not a charter school really near us, so it's not really an issue, then the charter school might get ten thousand dollars. And then there are two vocational or virtual charter schools in Massachusetts. And then the the virtual charter school gets like eight thousand dollars. So they're all different amounts based on the time when the things were set up. But yeah, that's that's a quick start.
Peter, how many kids do we have choice out?
We get that report in December.
Okay, yes. But but historically, like what's been the case is for for every three kids a choice and one kid choices out, give or take a little bit. And and there's some really interesting, sometime if you want to come in or maybe I'll even project it. People are doing some really interesting thing with with data visualization. And then these really crazy charts that you can pull up and it's been in some of Jake everyone's groups reporting. But they're like spaghetti reports and you see the towns and then like where people go from from the towns and in a in a visual way, and in some ways it's easier to digest.
Just to follow up on that, is there a specific time where kids who live in district will go to either private school or homeschool? Data is relates released or is that just kind of a constant?
No, the we we can run a little report on that. So I think in January, I think something like twenty kids district wide or involved in homeschooling, maybe slightly more. And then the the private school is
But you have that data.
Yeah.
Currently attending a private school.
Yes, I think we have all of that.
We do that. We do one of those public census report in January.
I'd actually, so I'd sometimes maybe after budget season, like March, April, I would like to have like this report. The choice out and then private and homeschools all on like one separate meeting to see. So we have all. I know it comes in at different spots to address it, but I kind of like to see all three of those at the same time to just kind of get a overall grasp. How many did we have? How many were taken in? How many were taken out? How many are homeschool, private school, the whole? You know, someday on May, June, whenever. Lighter schedule.
Yeah, happy to share that. I I think it's it'll be interesting. Okay, any other questions on this? All right.
I mean, we have a little bit about what it was from last year, right? FY twenty-three is last year's student body.
Yes.
And and we'll we'll run other reports about service. And and I'll end up being in the budget book too, like five-year trends and all of that. So we shared the CBT update, the regional school district planning board that work continues to chug along and the the building committee had a nice meeting last week. And and we went through the reports we shared, which there were there was an enrollment thing which is similar to this, only it was for many more years. And also like really granular detail about birth rates and housing developments. And there's a ton of housing being built in in Great Barrington that that probably people aren't aware of. I was sort of shocked how much is in the pipeline. And then the CBT stuff, which essentially Keith shared in a in a more accessible light tonight.
So I'm interested about the next step, sir.
So so the 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 next step for that group is for our December meeting, Steve's gonna share an overview of his, there there are two things. We're we're waiting to hear back from the MSBA around what our potential projected enrollment will be. And then there's a little back and forth around that, right? So all the data we shared with them, they're gonna put into their black box and come up with a number and then we'll have a conversation with them. So that's part of it. And then the second thing is there are many incentives for an MSBA project and one of the incentives is tied to our historical efficacy with maintenance of our buildings. And if if we can demonstrate that we did a really good job maintaining our buildings, which we do, then they give us, I think, up to a full two percent. Almost incentive, right? They recognize.
Again, on the reimbursement.
On the reimbursement rate. So at our December meeting, we may talk about what they say about enrollment, assuming they get it done. And December's not so far away, so I'm not sure they'll get it done by then. And then Steve will do a little overview of what he's done with maintenance. He got it before. And we've only improved our maintenance since the last time we submitted it. So I'm I'm pretty confident we'll get it. We'll try it again. So those are the two things. And then Steve Schatz joined the building committee. He was he's on the finance committee in Stockbridge, former select person in Stockbridge. And the the finance committee gave him the us and we submitted that to the state and the and the state approved that. So that's So I think that's my throat is dry. That's all I got. Sorry. What's that? The policies. Why don't we just do the policies? We have first readings, two new policies and first readings, please. Please comment on them either now or send an email to myself or Peter or both of us. And they will come up at the next meeting or second readings and vote. So does anybody have any discussion on them at this point? And and just one little distinction, sometimes policies come to us because they're recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and our our attorneys tied to some report that the state is doing, right? They say you really need to adopt these policies and board it. And sometimes we create shifts in our own policies in response or anticipation of a need. The these are both were sent to us and we were told that it's important that we adapt these to be compliant with ultimately audits that happen.
Hearing now buildings and grounds. We have none.
Super district evaluation. So we've done away with technology and district consolidation, which shortened the meeting by thirty seconds. Finance subcommittee, Rick.
Yeah, we met and we we had been cut short on two prior topics. One was the elementary school and two was special ed. So we finished those up. On the special ed side, there there may be some rearranging of some of the services that sounded like has potential not have too much of a budget impact, depending on how hours can be shifted. But more to come on that. We had a good discussion about the elementary school. Maybe some discussion, maybe expanding the librarian line item and then replace with intervention position. But it sounds like there's some potential there that may have, but may have a budget impact unclear yet. And also discussion of upgrading of the video technology in the classrooms. What we have now, the projectors are are I guess coming to that their end and we're gonna look at two different models. One is a upgrade that or a hybrid upgrade and one is just going to full on white or the smart boards in the classrooms. And we're gonna get back numbers on those to see that may have a budget effect as well. But there's also a discussion of alternative funding mechanisms for that. I think that was all. We had a addition of those two line items. So we'll be moving to this. That's the last of the topical overview is now be moving to like actual like budget composition review and things like that.
Any questions, comments? Okay, moving ahead, Peter, anything on the first hour report you want to plug?
No, no, I mean, Ben announced his his witness to the end of the year. We spoke about that last time and we appreciate the good work it's done and it continues to do.
Yes.
Sheriff Business Operations, FY twenty-three, first quarter transfer report.
This is a pretty small report, which usually happens in the first quarter since two of the months are not school months. The first one is for chem repairs at the middle school. The second is for additional stipends for we've we've talked about all the work that they're doing there. So they moved from contracted services to stipends. And then we needed additional translation services at the elementary school. So that's what the third entry is for. Additional architects at the middle school, the fourth one. The fifth one is also at the middle school, again for supplies libraries. And then curriculum software number six at the high school. As we know, we set the budget in February and then needs change by the time students arrive.
You have a motion to approve the specs. Motion to approve the FY twenty-three first quarter transfers.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Send no, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
A policy abstentions is unanimous. Moving ahead, any older new business before the committee?
Actually, one thing, the thinking about more than co-curricular. I'd like to join that.
Good, I wanted you to join it.
I want to say something out on the line. I was looking at you and you didn't say anything. I have some new business.
Yes, go.
I would like to make a motion that we formally congratulate Super Dylan, Super Denny Dillon on his successful completion of New York City American. I think his hard work and dedication there is emblematic of his work, the district.
Thank you. Good to see you came back alive.
Yes.
It was a little bit. Queens is long. Any public comment? Oh, there is any.
Yes.
Erica, let me just. Oh, Steve got it.
Hi, guys. It feels like it's always me every time. I had two things I wanted to ask about. One, I was excited to see the email from Peter that was titled Equity Memo. That went out, I think it was last week, but it was a little confusing because I know of some of the equity work that the district has been going doing, but it felt like this was not, I I heard people chatting about very little contact for it coming out. And when we were reading it, I happened to be with some coworkers at River Street Youth Project. It was interesting because a lot of it appeared to be community partnered diversity, equity and inclusion work and not actually district work. And so I'm I'm just curious about what the dist, I I would love to hear like updates about the work that the district is doing on equity and inclusion. For example, like we we so much involvement with Stoke Collective and I don't know where that's at now.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's that's fair. That's a good question. I I think the timing of it was interesting. So we shared that memo that's in partnership and it came out just around the same time. There was a big article in the Eagle around the the work to serve recent immigrants. And and I think in in both our memo and the article, it wasn't as clear as it could have been that 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 work is in partnership. So America is actually working for the district through them. In the and I think we'll just we'll use the next equity memo to address this even more. We both the article and our memo address the exponential growth in our English language learner population. And in the last few years, we went from like one and a half, two teachers to now five ESL teachers, which is really quite a remarkable shift. We've tried to do some more work around family and community meetings and we've we've had some real success with that. Lydia at the elementary school, one of the five ESL teachers is leading a lot of that work and that's been and that's been really positive. And then there's an inclusion task force that you're aware of, but maybe not everybody else is aware of that that Railroad Street is is providing significant support on. So students' voices are are ringing louder than ever around additional shifts and and work we can do. So I I think you're right to to call it out. I think both our own memo and the Eagle article missed how so much of this work is embedded in real partnership and and I think we'll articulate the the depth of those partnerships, current and evolving in in future versions of that that memo.
My second question is around what seems to be an abundance of like adult or parent groups that I don't feel like existed in prior years at the district and at the different schools. So like when my son first started at Du Bois, the way that I could get involved was to join the school school advisory council. And that was to inst- to help institute the school improvement plan. That was a subtext of the district improvement plan. And now I I've started to hear about like I don't, I'm not super clear on SAB and 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 a number of other. It just feels like there's a growing number of adult or or family focused groups that are either at the schools or in district-wide that are getting confusing for other people that I talk to and they ask me what they're about because they think I know what's going on at the district.
Yeah, so I mean, I I I think we could do some sort of graphic representation of this. It it changes as as young people get older and they get more i- independent, right? This is value-free word. So typically, parents in the elementary school have been involved other through the PTA or some subset of the PTA and 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 some of those groups change names over time. So a long time ago, when my own kids were in elementary school and I just started, there was a Green Peas group, which is an offshoot of the PTA that had an environmental focus. And then that group got involved in in the annual Monday celebration. Each building has had some sort of iteration of a of a advisory council that may have been in addition or separate from the PTA. There's by law, it's required to have parent advisory councils when you hit a certain number of students in particular subgroups. So we've had one in in special education for forever and we're just now forming or have recently formed an English language learner parent advisory council. The the particular interest areas have also sort of created booster or booster equivalent things. So a a bunch of parents have come together around the the musical in the middle school and and provide some support there. That's obviously always been the case for all athletic programs at the high school and and Shakespeare in the musical. And then clubs, ultimate, band, on and on and on. I I think we could share a I, I think we could share a graph, like a graphic representation of it and, and explain.
That would be great. And that, because the other question that people are asking is like, can parents join that, like the SAB group? It's not clear to me who the adults are that are part of that.
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, a, a lot of the people, and Christie, do you want to speak to? A, a lot of the people are, are.
I have a suggestion rather than getting into a, a long-winded explanation of every group at every high school. And I'm going to sound like a broken record. Erica is one of the most involved community members and involved parents in the district. And she can't make heads or tails of what's going on at any of these schools. I have the same problem as a parent. The programs are great, the communication is haphazard and amateur. And that's why we're in this position. So we, so and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to graphic the chair to the school committee. I want a strategic plan of how all parents, the next generation coming up behind Erica and myself, will understand and be able to access all these things at the school without a personal phone call from the superintendent.
Yeah. And one of the things I was going to say, and I don't always agree with Rich, but this time I I don't think Erica expects Peter to, you to give very detailed answers immediately. And she, and so I think some of these things can be put on a further agenda. And, and we can really have it well thought out and, and improve where we need to. But instead of you trying to
Steve has learned, Steve has learned that from my involvement in the town board of, board, select board.
Exactly, yes, exactly. There's no, she's not putting you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
You did a good job, but I, I, I think it's more important that we get other people involved, the, the schools and, and figure this out if there's either a problem or just needs clarification. Erica, I appreciate that.
I like the idea also of what Rich is talking about. Let's see a graph where everything is like the, the columns that you did when we were looking at the schools.
Yeah.
Okay, so where parents groups are in each individual school, then how they relate it through a line or something like that where, and then what are the, what are some qualifications or who's open to what and all that? That's what I
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do something that, that makes it accessible. Any other public comment? Anything from the board? If not, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.